Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of February 6, 2017. Can we get the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Spring.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
President.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Ms. Barker.
Here.
Mr. Spohays, Mr. Spinelli, and Mr. Striker, been excused. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to reorder the agenda to add Resolution 2016-048 as item 1B? And it's the resolution that you have laying on the table in front of you. Thank you. Mitzi, can I get a second for that? Seconded by Mr. Spring. Any objection? Hearing none. That resolution is now added as 1B. There are two resolutions on the consent agenda here this evening. Next up, disclosures. Ms. Bailey.
I was not present for the Resolution 2016-048, but I did listen to the recordings.
Thank you for that. Mr. Walker?
For disclosures.
None? None. Mr. Spring?
I have none. Thank you.
And Ms. Barker?
I was not present for case 2016-0144, but I did listen to the recordings of that one.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. And I have no disclosures. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Spring, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any items commissioners wish to pull from the consent agenda? There are two resolutions there. I know you've just been-
Can we kind of read it real quick?
Sure.
Sounds okay to me.
Good with the findings? Okay. Any objection to the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. The case that we have here this evening is the Land Use Plan Map, case 2016-0127. It's been continued several times, and we intend to sort of get through a number of issues that staff has prepared for us this evening, but are still at not a point where we're taking final action, given that there's still some outstanding issues. And I think maybe before we make a motion to go into the Committee of the Whole, if Mr. Davis, you want to walk us through what we have here this evening, and then you had indicated that you would also provide a list of remaining items, if we could get that as well. That'd be great.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have 21 issue-response items for the Commission, and in our memorandum, we identify about eight or nine of those with an underline. The ones that are underlined were the ones that staff considered to merit Committee of the Whole discussion and deliberation individually, so that you would get to the item and discuss it with one another before determining what the Commission tentatively thinks about the recommendation for that issue. The remaining ones without the underlines, staff believes could be tentatively approved by the Committee of the Whole without individually discussing those items, so that they could just determine if any Commissioner wishes to pull the item or raise the item. Say a Commissioner has a question or concern about 0D, for example, they could request to have that pulled for discussion. Otherwise, the ones that are not underlined, staff believes Commission could just batch, pre-approve those as a Committee of the Whole. And also, later on, when the Commission completes its Committee of the Whole work on all the issues in Land Use Plan Map, of course, the Commissioners can return to these. But this batching is a way we believe could really help you all get through the items quickly and separate the more substantive ones from the less substantive ones. These underlines versus non-underlines are just staff's take on it. They aren't in this direction. That's just our best shot at determining for you all what might be the most controversial or complicated or substantive items, and call those out for you. In addition to the 21 items, we have counted up the remaining items yet to be deliberated on, and we do have a list, memo, one-pager for the Commission that could help it determine schedule, if you wish to do that either before or after these 21 items. Mr. Cecil has the memo for you. He could bring that around now, or we could discuss that later. Thank you.
If you could just pass it out now, we'll bring it up later, but I appreciate that. I'd just like to see what we got in front of us. So what I intend to do is ask for a motion for us to go into Committee of the Whole, and then I'm going to ask, thank you, Mitzi, is there a second? Any objection to going into the Committee of the Whole? Hearing none, we are in the Committee of the Whole. What I'd like to do is just go down this list, or ask each Commissioner if their items that you would like to see pulled. I see no reason, if you're fine with the underlined one as well, you could leave it. If you want to call all the other lined ones, that's fine as well. So I can either go one-to-one or ask each Commissioner. What's the preference?
I have something I would like to pull.
So how about, I would just go down the line. Anyone wishing to pull 0D? My only question on 0G, and it doesn't warrant further discussion, is you've abbreviated "real estate division" as "red," and I've never seen that anywhere. So just make sure that's something that we actually use. 1G, shall we just, shall we pull all the underlined ones? Or shall I go, okay, 1G. Anyone wish 1G? I didn't have an issue with 1G.
I didn't have an issue with it.
Grammatical correction? Okay. You want, you want to just do that? So Ms. Bailey's just got a short grammatical issue with 1G that she can indicate, but otherwise, we're going to keep rolling. Okay? 1H?
I have, I want to pull that one.
Okay. 1, I'm going to go get the whole list, and then we'll go back. Right? 1I?
I'd like to pull that one.
1K?
And that's my last one.
Okay, well, you pulled all three of those, John?
Yes.
Okay. It's coming. It's coming. 2B, addendum. I'd actually like to pull that one briefly. 2G? I can't remember 2G. I can't read my writing. Might go into that one, but for now, we'll just, we'll call it good. 3B?
I'm okay to approve that one.
3B is on what? 3B is... 3B is Turnagain Airport. Anyone in this references some work, Ms. Bailey, that you had indicated?
Yeah, I think there was one or two things I might want to address on that.
Let's just, let's pull that one.
Yeah.
3H, addendum. 5D? I'm going to pull that one. 5I? 10D, Part II? I'd like some background on that one. 11B?
I think that needs some discussion. I'd like to discuss that one.
11C? With map. Yeah, I had just a question on that one. And 11G?
I'd like to pull that one.
Figured that one. All right. So I think some of these will go pretty quickly, some might be more. But for the ones we did not pull, we doing formal motions here, kind of? Just for the record, then. For the record, can we get a motion to approve staff's recommendation on the, and I'll read them out here. 0D, 0F, 0G, 1G, 2G, 3H, 5F, 5H, 5I, 7C, and 8I? Motion approved from Mr. Walker, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any objection? Hearing none. We'll go with our recommendation, for staff's recommendation on those. See how much time we just saved there this evening? Brilliant. Brilliant. Thank you for those, that presentation. So first up, then, to discuss is 1H. And what I might ask, rather than have, unless you just want the staff presentation, but if you pulled it, if you wouldn't mind just saying what your question is for starters, and then we'll go into it further if need be.
1H, I think I pulled that one.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, staff, I had some problems with the understanding what the community resiliency means. It wasn't, it seemed a little vague. I guess I agree with the comment to some extent. I think if I, I might have some wording that might clarify a little bit, if, assuming that I understand what it means. Can you explain it a little bit, what that actually means, because it could mean anything to me, pretty much.
Yes, through the Chair. The goal discussion that supports this goal statement and subsequent paragraphs could provide such a definition and help support this. Resiliency is the, you know, the ability of the community to withstand stressors, shocks, to maintain its, and maintain and grow economically. But resiliency also includes minimizing risk to natural man-made hazards. It includes economic resiliency in terms of building, you know, an economy that can withstand the ups and downs of the local economy, that can withstand the ups and downs of the oil economy, and attract a talented workforce over time. And it also deals with the social ties and connections, neighborhoods where people know one another, and, you know, social resiliency over time. So it's a broad thing, and it sort of goes in hand-in-hand with our objective to grow, our objective to have a livable community, and resiliency is just right in there with those other two. Thank you.
Through the Chair. So is that described anywhere in the discussion, that definition?
No, and it occurred to me while you were asking the question that it's in the goal. It would be a good place to describe it in the Goal One discussion. There's a brief reference to some aspects of it in the very last paragraph in the Goal One discussion on that same page, right before it starts listing Goal One policies, 1.1, et cetera. It mostly is referencing that folks have raised this issue, that the current Mayor Administration is addressing this issue, but it could be a place to clarify what resiliency means to this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that would be helpful.
So is your, so staff has a recommendation. Are you suggesting you'd like additional, some additional language to define or explain the term "resiliency"?
I think it would be helpful. I had trouble understanding what it was. I thought it meant more or less just economic resiliency, as it relates to the land use plan's attempt to provide sufficient supply of residential, commercial, and industrial land. That's what my thought was, but it seems broader than that, so maybe it needs to be clarified.
It's sort of this decade's equivalent of the term "sustainable," really.
Yeah.
So any objection to concurring with staff's recommendation with the request to add a little bit more explanation of the term "resiliency"? Any objection to that? Otherwise, recommendation good? Thumbs up? Thumbs up. So with that, with a little bit extra on resiliency, we're good with item 1H. 1I?
Yes, I pulled that one also, and I think the discussion was really good. But I think just approving it without at least some findings on our part would kind of be negligent. I like the fact that you show, you write down some of our comments on the P&amp;Z action, on the far-right column. And so I'd like to make a statement, I think, regarding your conclusions here. I agree with the conclusions, more or less, but I would like to state that I think, with respect to this comprehensive effort that you're undertaking, it's a bit more important than some of the district plans, and I think, although you say that they're basically equal, the land use plan and the district plans, but it's clear to me that district plans can't always take in consideration the overall needs of the community, especially when you've done some additional research regarding the demand and supply of residential, commercial, industrial land uses, and these district plans didn't have that information available. So I think it's important to make sure that this, that even though you state that they're basically equal, but I think something needs to be said that this land use plan effort is more comprehensive and takes in consideration the overall supply and demand of land in Anchorage, whereas some of the district plans weren't able to do that. If that's stated somehow in our action, I'd be fine with it.
So here's the trick, you know, because we're in Committee of the Whole, because of the way this works, there's really no record of what you just said unless there is specific language or modification to this policy itself. So I agree with everything you just said. I don't know how to capture it, you know, and we're getting to a point of having hundreds of these kind of issues in front of us for formal deliberation. I doubt we're going to have time to sort of speak to findings on individual ones when it comes to actual deliberations, you know what I mean?
Good point. Can we pull this one, and then, so we can vote on it, and I can put those findings in when we have, we're out of the Committee of the Whole?
Yeah. I mean, that would be the way to do it, is to not, sort of not approve it, if you will. And that way, it's triggered to get pulled. And maybe, and/or, if there's just some language that you, if there's a, you're saying you might want to add a sentence in there that sort of defines the hierarchy a little bit more.
Well, that'd be, that'd be easier for the public to follow after we plan is approved. That's true, rather than going through the notes of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any other Commissioners have thoughts on that? Staff, do you have any response to John's comment?
I'm not sure if this is something that needs to happen in this Land Use Policy 1.4. If there is interest in clarifying the relationship, we're, we've been working on it on Page Three of the plan, where we define the relationship between 2020, the 2040 plan, and especially how these two big comp plan elements relate to the neighborhood and area-specific plans, which are the little Russian doll inside the bigger Russian doll, so to speak. Perhaps the Page Three discussion would be a place to review, see if the Commission-
So you're saying, as I read it, right there where it says Page Three, 2040 Plan recommendations different from adopted plans, and you go on to say, "These changes are recommended for the following reasons," and then flowing over to four, there are five bullets, basically highlighting the analysis that you've talked about. So because there's been additional studies, or because there's updated forecasts, or because there's emerging issues that didn't happen in that area plan. So in other words, I think that that captures kind of what you're, what you're raising, John.
Okay, as long as there's not a contradiction between this, the written text and the policy. I mean, if it's not a problem, then it seems to me that it, they, they are somewhat in contradiction, because you set it up in the policy to be equal. And if you look at the policy, which is what you're supposed to follow, not the text necessarily, the policy has more weight. I would say that, well, I don't know which to use. I guess we'll just have to toss a coin or something, and since there's a, if there's a difference between the district plan and the comp plan, I mean, the way you have it set up in the policy is that they're totally equal.
Right. Well, the policy says that the land use plan and area-specific plans shall be used to determine appropriate zoning. It says you're going to use both. It doesn't say what happens when there's a conflict. And I would say, this is how, because, and I'll give it to Tom in a second, but we've dealt with this for ever and ever, right? I would say that when there's a, when there's a conflict, that it's at the discretion, to some degree, of the Commission to make a finding related to why, in fact, I'd say it's incumbent upon the Commission to say why you followed one over the other, based on whatever information you're analyzing at that time. Go ahead, Tom, and then Ms. Bailey's in the queue, too.
Yes, thank you. Policies 1.1, 1.2, and 1.3 also speak to the overall analysis and providing for the overall residential, commercial, and other land needs of the community. Policy 1.3 speaks of coordinating area-specific plans with these overall needs. If the Commission wishes us to explore this, trying to clarify this relationship further, there are other policies at play as well that we could look at. 1.4 supersedes Anchorage 2020 Policy 4. Policy 4 and Anchorage 2020 only refer to neighborhood and district plans. 1.4 inserts the land use plan map into the equation. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
I think this is an area where if we add more to it and try to describe the hierarchy, it might work for a majority of situations, but I'm worried that in certain situations, it won't, and then we'll have to follow something that won't be the true intent. So I would rather just leave it as is, and I understand it's kind of vague, but sometimes we have to operate in that vague area.
Good comment. Danielle? Okay, John, you pulled this. How would you like to deal with it?
I am persuaded that it'll work.
Okay.
We'll have to use some, actually think through the issues, I guess. I'm opposed to that.
Yeah, somehow I don't believe that. So, okay. Everybody good with the LUP 1.4 as recommended by staff? I take that as a yes. So 1K, Mr. Spring?
Yes. It looks like, staff, that your conclusion was that there'll be additional language following to, let's see, revised language to reflect the likelihood of a timeframe of a Kinkarm crossing has become uncertain. So there's more, if we approve this one, then we're basically saying, yes, staff, we agree with the recommendation and your additional revisions in the future that you come up with. Right?
Through the Chair. You know, issue-response item 1B, 1B, we have only in a very starter draft form. 1B is where it'll include basically, basically, the new, not new, it will show all the proposed revisions to the language of Section 1.2. 1.2 forecasting growth in this public hearing draft was a big leap from the previous draft, but it still didn't have really everything we wanted to show in it. And we're working with our consultant to try to beef this section up. In 1B, we can include this Page Nine, Jay Bear, Nickarm Crossing discussion in that. So essentially, this 1K is basically, in that last part, it is basically just tell, you'll see those text edits before you approve it all. And we can, we can write that, if you're, if that's okay, we can write that into the PCC Action on 1K, subject to PCC review of the text in 1B.
Through the Chair, that'd be fine, I think. I was just concerned with being able to review changes to land use estimates based on with or without the Kinkarm crossing. And it's such a sensitive issue, I didn't want to just overlook it here and give approval without knowing what the answer is. So thank you.
So would I, would I, could you restate what you thought, Mr. Davis, how this ought to read in the matrix?
Yes, and under the recommendations on Page 17, last paragraph, it reads Page Nine, last paragraph, revised language, et cetera, et cetera. It ends with, in parentheses, "Staff to develop specific text edits." Perhaps add something there that, and provide those to Planning and Zoning Commission as part of issue-response item 1B.
Okay. You good with that, Mr. Spring? Anybody else have any comment on item 1K? Go ahead, Mitzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this really kind of a wordsmithing of the paragraph above, the last one we read where it says "recommendation"? You've got the indented paragraph on Page 17 that talks about the Chugak Eagle River Plan anticipated population growth. I just, like, I have a wordsmithing, so that would want to change the second sentence in that paragraph to say, "Chugak Eagle River Plan designates substantial land reserves for future single-family housing, as well as areas suited for more compact development." And then pick up again, "For these reasons, the areas expect to accommodate 15, partially 15% of the municipality's population by 2040."
Let's try that one more time. So we're, the Chugak Eagle River Plan designates substantial land reserves for future single-family housing-
Comma, "as well as areas suited for more compact development."
Suited for more compact development.
And so the next sentence is okay, and then we strike the one that starts "some space for more compact housing types is also provided."
And then scratch the sign, "Some, some space for more compact housing is also provided." I don't have any objection. Anyone have any objection? I like it? All good?
Thank you.
Staff, did you capture that?
Yes, thank you.
So with Ms. Barker's edits, and then with the kind of acknowledgement that we're going to see the text edits on the Page Nine, or however you bring it back into 1B, we are good with item 1K. 2B, I think, was one that I brought up. is one that I brought up. I, I, I think, I, I pulled this one. I was generally trying to trace back to the comments that Mr. Anderson provided, which there were a bunch of them that really had to do with trying to look for appropriate ways to blend small, you know, neighborhood scale, commercial into certain parts of, of town. That in other words, people, you know, for lack of, you know, just using these examples, but you know, the, the Fire Island Bakery type thing, or the Rustic Goat type, you know, type things that while they're sometimes a little bit controversial, they generally seem to be supported in, in, by and large, in, in our community. And I think that's what Mr. Anderson's comments were. You know, whether it was South Edition or areas of Fairview that, that he's knowledgeable on. And I'm wondering if you could just overall you know, kind of provide a response to that of how you think the land use plan allows for those opportunities in the future. So on, on one of the items, you said, well, we don't want to explicitly allow it in the other zoning districts in the R three and everything else. Um, but I think what you're saying is there may in fact be areas that are appropriate for B one A, you know. Does this plan tell us where those areas are? How we would go about identifying a carve out? What would happen if someone really wants, for the most part, residential development, but wants a small little corner coffee shop associated with it? And doesn't really want to go in and rezone a whole block because really all they want is something. So I think that's what he's getting at. And I, and I can appreciate it. I don't know how, how does the plan help us get there?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, the, the plan includes a couple of routes for, for doing that. First of which, uh, it it, uh, it's, it took the approach to, uh, not necessarily identify every small community neighborhood commercial zone B one A on the map because it's so big. So like Fire Island Bake Shop and, uh, in South Edition, Fire Island Bake Shop and Airport Heights and Turnigan Crossing with the Rustic Goat. They're so small that the land use plan map leaves it to neighborhood and district plans to identify exactly where these are because they're, they are so small. And, and what it says instead is that, uh, at the beginning of the listing of the residential, uh, neighborhood designations, it states that these designations include, um, small corner neighborhood commercial. In other words, it's, it can be, it's, we don't call out specifically where in, in, in most cases. That's on, uh, page twenty six, first column, second paragraph. Uh, neighborhood designated areas can include small scale commercial services. Uh, and here's where it, uh, parcels out where B one A can or can't be. It, it reads neighborhood designated areas can include small scale commercial services located in existing neighborhood business zoning districts. So if it's already existing, it's incorporated in this plan. Or in new locations designated by a neighborhood or district plan. So I think in the case of the West Plan, it, it kind of showed an area that became Turnigan Crossing. Uh, but this plan doesn't show Turnigan Crossing because the plan's so general. Uh, so that mechanism would require a planning effort in order to locate a, a small neighborhood commercial. Another route is, uh, in the existing high density zoning district, the R four. There, there is a provision, uh, oh, and one more thing about the B one A. Uh, the commenter and several others, um, based on experience with the old Title 21, assume there's some kind of um, minimum size restriction for rezoning to B one A of one point seven five acres. But the new code took that away and, and now you can get a much smaller Fire Island Bake Shop sized corner commercial. So someone could propose a rezoning to B one A. So, uh, the B one A could also be, you could also get a rezoning to B one A through, uh, with, let's say you don't have a neighborhood plan support for getting a rezoning to B one A. So you want to put a B one A in the middle of the Abbott. Abbott Neighborhood. Somewhere back east of Lake Otis, next to a park, perfect place. No neighborhood plan. You know, catch 22, what do you do? So, uh, the plan, uh, basically is designed to be amended and, and we have our concurrent amendments process. Which we've used several times. Um, basically that because they are proposing a commercial use in a residential area, that requirement to concurrently amend the comp plan with the rezoning, uh, just takes it to the next level up of, uh, of, uh, community review so that, uh, there's, uh, there's that process. Some kind of, uh, process to amend the plan. But leaving that for a minute, uh, there's also the R four district. It has, uh, limited commercial, corner commercial provisions in it. Uh, the commenter wanted those to be expanded because right now it's only fifteen hundred square feet. You can get fifteen hundred square feet of, uh, you know, a commercial corner coffee shop in your residential development. His observation is, wow, that's really not very much space. And, uh, but the plan here, again, it's so general that it, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't get into those specifics. It just merely calls out that commercial space could be allowed in that. In the urban residential high on page, um, twenty nine, third column, third bullet down, limited ground floor commercial space within residential projects. So that urban residential high is the highest density residential designation. It cross references to the R four. So this is referring to the ability to include ground floor commercial. But it is getting into specifics about how much. If it's a, if it's really, uh, important, uh, this plan could improve, include an action item to expand that within the R four. Uh, thirdly, uh, the plan is calling out, um, with the spackle, the stipple polka dot white overlaying some areas of, of urban residential high, which cross references R four. And the urban residential medium, cross reference R three, it's calling out those areas to allow, uh, mixed use with residential quite a bit. In fact, the, the zoning district of choice for the higher intensity is the R four A. R four A is, uh, residential mixed use high density. Planning Department is now begun work on, uh, a tool, a zoning, a medium density residential mixed use zoning tool uh, to be able to, uh, go provide a medium density, uh, you know, so to speak, an R three A tool for that. Those are the primary methods. Uh, the residential zones otherwise don't really include the provision to allow commercial in them. Um, from R two M on down and, uh, from R three on down, um, I have seen communities that do that. To do that, that would, uh, that would involve, um, some, uh, extra standards, higher level of review, conditional use, other means. Our method of choice is a rezoning to B one A or to one of these other, uh, categories. Because, uh, a commercial in a, in a residential district, uh, has the potential to have a lot of impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I, I, thanks for the explanation. I think, I think just, it's sort of a exercise in in, uh, in, in scale. I mean, if someone wanted to do a relatively small investment, they wanted to put in a Fire Island Bakery, is it really practical to think that they would go through the effort of rezoning? You know, versus what I think happened there is they sought out and found you know, land that was zoned appropriately so they could have assurance that what they wanted to do would work. And I think that's the fundamentally where we have the problem. It's, we're trying to attract the type of investment that it's not fair to assume that they would, they would actually take this on. This is not, I don't view it as a large scale you know, effort. And, and I think that's, and you know, short of those kind of being identified through planning efforts, and maybe it means it needs to happen at the you know, smaller area planning scale or something like that. I just, I just think we ought to be really realistic that, that these, these types of businesses are not going to go out and attempt to rezone you know, anywhere. So I think if it's not the community saying, hey, this is the right place for this type of commercial. I don't think it's going to happen. Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I agree with you. I talked to the owner of the Fire Island, who happened to find new location near my house. And she, I asked her how she came about finding the place. And she said she looked for a couple of years to find a suitable site and that there's so few available B one B type of sites around that this was pretty much it, the one that was on Sixteenth and Logan.
Right.
And there is a shortage. And I think there is more of a, a demand than the supply is available. And you're right about the difficulty of going through, uh, blindly through a zone change without having any support from a comp plan. I mean, for the most part, it's going to be difficult.
Even if you had the support of the comp plan, you're still looking at eight months and a pretty significant expense. You know, and I just don't think it's practical to assume anyone's going to do that. Uh, Ms. Bailey?
Um, one thing that I've noticed on the comp plan in a couple of areas is you, one of the action items is to have the planning staff in the future. I think we're too late in the game to identify these areas. And I'm not sure the proper word wording, but I think it would be helpful if the planning staff did kind of go and find some of these practically, because I agree, I don't think many people are willing to take that expense, especially because it's essentially a roll of the dice if it's going to get approved or not anyways. And I'm not sure if I like the idea of it just being automatically rezoned, or maybe there's just something that speeds up that process that they don't need to pay as much of an application fee, or that it goes under a faster timeline. I don't think I'm convinced that a by right would be the good way to go about it. But I do like the idea of there being some sort of shortcut method for these areas that the planning staff has identified as suitable because I agree, this is something that more and more our community wants. And if we want walkable neighborhoods, they need something to walk to.
Good point. I like your suggestion, uh, of, of perhaps having an action of some kind that, um, directs subsequent efforts of small area plans or area plan efforts to specifically identify locations appropriate for, um, small neighborhood serving commercial. The second part of that was to potentially contemplate within those areas then something that's not quite by right, but something that's also not a rezone. So whether it's a conditional use permit, or something with site plan review, or something along those lines, some standards that limit sizes, whatever those are. I think that gets at the spirit of, you know, not taking years to get through something. So I don't know where that goes. Is that, is that, I don't know. I like the suggestion. I don't know where, where we put it. Any idea, Hal, did you want to comment?
I'm thankful for the commissioner for bringing this issue up. It's one of my pet peeves. I really think there are principles of urban retail that are really important. And one of them is in when you have a traditional neighborhood, you're counting rooftops basically, and you're talking about and looking at things like a whole number of issues like walkability. The thing that's good about both Fire Island and both locations is there's a walkability to that, to that location. So where you have a high walkability score in a traditional neighborhood, you can put some of those in. What the principles of retail by Gibbs is the one that I use a lot. And what he says is that if, if you have about eight hundred to a thousand rooftops, that you can successfully do, do one within a, that's in a high walk score neighborhood, or our traditional neighborhoods. Some of which are really hurting for investment right now in our community. So as we go to the infill, there's going to be more retail opportunities. And we want to make sure we work together with you and the communities to figure out with that, how to get that woven into the context of that neighborhood. So I think there's a way to do that. Then it would change if you have, um, as you think of the, the retail, um, the goat example, because you have a, even though it's in a neighborhood, you have a lot of traffic there. So that's a little bit different retail animal in that case, but.
In a way, that one's easier. I mean, that would be a traditional, hey, I'm going to rezon this two acre parcel or acre and a half to B one A or something like that. Yeah.
I think the community's asking exactly for what you're talking about there. And if you're going to, if you were going to put a few condos in and then you wanted even a fair amount of condos or apartments, that you'd have a small space for retail in that neighborhood context. That's what people are really looking for.
Mr. Davis, you got anything for us?
Uh, yes, we could take up the commenter's suggestion to add a policy to, uh, the goal three mixed use walkable commercial centers that thrive within their neighborhood context, offer housing, et cetera. Add a, add a policy, three point something there that speaks to, uh, this, uh, uh, this walkable neighborhood serving corner commercial uh, in the neighborhoods. Um, and then as a, that as a starting place, sort of a cover, uh, policy cover. And then, uh, excuse me. To, uh, add the action item that you suggest, um, and that I think the commenter might have been alluding to, add an action item to section three of the plan to, uh, I was trying to write down what you were saying as you were saying it, uh, through a small area planning process, other means, uh, identify areas needing neighborhood commercials and, and, and potential, uh, you know, shortcut methods. To, uh, uh, approve or allow those to happen so that walkable neighborhoods have some walk, something walk, something within walking distance to walk to. Uh, and then once those locations are identified and that process is set, some, uh, means, uh, for applicants in those areas to, to have a, some easier route than a rezoning to, uh, make these, uh, possible in those areas. We, we can look around for other strategies.
That's great. And I don't know what it is. Maybe it's an overlay district that within a certain part of town, there's a certain amount of, again, it's, it's somewhere between a by right and a rezone. A rezone is far too onerous. Um, it just doesn't feel like the right process. It kind of feels like we don't want them to do that. When in fact, what we're saying is we're trying to find these places that are opportunities. Danielle, are you still in there? Or you, that was that from before? Okay. So if, I, I guess with that, if you want to take a stab and bring that one, you know, add that to the list. I guess that goes down about number one hundred and twenty nine on your list, I think. That's two B addendum, three B addendum.
Uh, I apologize. Uh, so, uh, on to B, uh, am I? What am I, should I assume that we would, uh, revise this and bring back the language to the commission so that you can review it?
Well, I don't know how else. Well, I don't know how else it gets, you know, I think it could be one of those ones that just gets a quick check, but we didn't flush anything, you know, out concretely. I'm hoping that's not an incredible burden to do what we're suggesting. I think it's a couple of sentences. So 3B, I think what we decided was this was a substantive issue that we would just ask for staff's comment on 3B. Was that, was that your view, John? This is, this is the section having to do with the airport. Or was this yours, Danielle?
Yeah, I think I just had a couple of small.
Okay. Great.
I am fine with everything one through six. On number seven, I think your recommendation goes a little against what kind of the staff's objection that you mentioned earlier. And so just a brief amendment, it would be, any airport expansion must preserve AWU water treatment facility operations, comma, future expansion needs, comma, any coastal trail realignment, comma, as well as maximum retention of the coastal trail. And so that would be my recommended change there, just because I think it more clearly hits on everything that you state in the paragraph above.
So I'm going to ask you to go one more time so that staff can capture it carefully.
So go facility operations, comma, future expansion needs, comma, any coastal trail realignment, comma, as well as maximum retention of the coastal trail, period. That was number seven.
That, no objection. As long as it's clear to everyone that that the intent is that the first comma and then future expansion needs, that's pretty clear. It's referring back to the AWU facility expansion needs.
Oh, well, then I would delete the comma there. That was a confusion on my part then. Then I would change it. So facility operations and future expansion needs, comma, then go any coastal trail realignment, comma, as well as maximum retention of the coastal trail.
Good?
Thank you.
Any objection? Brandon, you good?
And then I had one other suggestion on 10. They suggested the word may be added, and you recommended the word can be added, and I just think you should keep it the way it was. I don't think you need to say conflicts may exist or conflicts can exist. I think it's fine to say conflicts exist.
Doesn't, doesn't mitigate it with the word. So what are we saying? You're recommending we keep may?
I'm recommending, no, we don't. I think may was recommended as an addition.
But it says can right now?
And then staff recommended adding the word can.
Oh, you just say conflicts exist?
Yeah.
So no can, no may.
Yeah, I think it's clear that conflicts exist.
All right. Any objection to no can, no may? We just shortened this document by one word here this evening. This is fantastic. We might get a paragraph before the evening's out. Everybody good? All right. No can, no may, no how. All right. 5D. Next up is 10D. Probably was mine, but you find it. Oh, and it's 10D, Part Two. So I, this, this is the area that specifically has to do with the space between Minnesota and Spinard, 36th and 31st, right? Basically, an area that's all zoned commercial today. But the use pattern is really a whole mix of older residential, industrial, some commercial. You can buy lizard feed. You can buy marijuana. You can go to a warehouse with no windows. You can go to a bar. You can do anything in this area. Pretty much all goes. And I think, can you just explain the the recommendation is, are you, you're recommending that we call it, exactly define the the land use recommendations that you're going, but where's the, where's the, the Main Street corridor and where's the residential mixed use?
Well, on the issue response map, the area outlined in black in the public review, public hearing draft plan, the public hearing draft plan designated as residential high with the polka dot pattern, which would have led it to a kind of a R4A type of implementation zone that would have required each lot, each development, each parcel to have some amount of residential. And in review of the comment and the lot sizes, we recommend to change that to one of the commercial-based designations, the pink. The closest one we found, because it's along Spinard Road, being the Main Street corridor, it's also right on that transit-supported development corridor of Spinard Road, you know, well within 800, 900 feet or so. So it's a, there you have it, a Main Street corridor, which is like a kind of the urban small lot walkable version of the commercial corridor. The polka dot pattern stayed. We recommended that the area be encouraged to have residential. And we do that in a few other areas that are commercially designated, parts of downtown, and that's meant to be more in the world of allowing and incentivizing rather than requiring residential. Thank you.
So I'm just, when I think about Main Streets, this area doesn't spring to mind. So I'm just, I'm just, I mean, I'm hearing you say because, it doesn't to me, like these cross streets to me don't, don't connotate, you know, Main Street style development. Are you just suggesting that it's the closest description that we have in the land use categories? And that's really why we're calling it Main Street? Does that have any bearing on how streets would be designed in the area, or how buildings would face those streets? You see where I'm going with this?
Yes. And, you know, the Main Street corridor name was, you know, we also looked at mixed-use corridor, something that describes a more fine-grained urban pattern that really fits this area far better than, you know, Diamond Boulevard-style suburban commercial corridor area. We also looked at, well, does it, you know, is it, could it be part of the Spinard Town Center? But its connectivity is just directly into Spinard Road corridor. It doesn't have, and we don't think it can easily get easy connectivity straight north into the Spinard Town Center. So it's really a part of that corridor. And with the polka dot pattern, it, you know, becomes a mixed-use area with encouraging residential. And so I, we, we don't have a better land use designation than the...
Why don't you create a Spinart land use designation? Because this strikes me as, Spinart. Go, let's, Mr. Spring, Danielle, are you in here for this one?
No, sorry.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, well, so I think your intent is to make this more flexible so that you could develop almost anything in this, pretty much, and get approval, except maybe industrial, perhaps.
The implementation zone would remain B3. B3 allows light industrial uses, subject to some strings attached. It's more flexible than the old Title 21 with respect to light industrials.
But if, say, I wanted to build some apartments there, and so I'd have to get a rezoning.
It's B3.
Would that be supported?
No, you can build, you can build residential in B3.
Well, limited.
What's the, no, I don't think so.
We, the old code had a minimum density attached to it, and the new code does not have a minimum density.
Okay, so you wouldn't need to have, could you build residential separately, standalone?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So it doesn't really matter?
Well, that, I mean, that's part of why my comment in the first place is it already is is commercially zoned. So just wishing it to be residential is not going to turn it into residential. I think what works for the area is the mix of uses in a horizontal setting. Not, you're not going to get a lot of high-intensity vertical mixed use in that area. And so I guess, so you're agreeing, this this gives the flexibility that sort of the comment was, which was my comment, and I couldn't figure that one out. But it gives that flexibility that's consistent with what the area kind of could be.
Yeah. Is, another follow-up question. Is this a small area planning area, or is it anything to do, is it already being planned for or what?
It's the Spinart corridor plan area. I'm looking forward to seeing what they develop.
Is it potentially a redevelopment area?
You know, I think it lies just outside of the RFA for Middle Spinard. Well, no, no, it's in the RFA. It's not in the targeted area rezone, but it is in the Spinard, Middle Spinard RFA, identified in the actions map. It goes all the way to Minnesota.
That seems appropriate to me. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other question? I guess I'll concur with the staff recommendation after that, after that explanation. Anyone else? No, we're good with that one. I realized I skipped over 5D, so I'm going to go back to 5D. Unit lot subdivisions. My, my only question here is where you had a recommendation, new small lot housing regulations such as unit lot subdivisions can promote efficient use of residential land. Is that, is that the, you have a, you have some policies that recommend additional tools be explored for infill housing in this document, right?
Yes, we do. And we start talking about it in Goal Four, back in Section One. To me, this looks like Page 55. It's, it's in Strategy Number Something or Another. The strategy about infill housing, the implementation strategy Number Six. So it's adding a sentence to that strategy, and that strategy is talking about all kinds of other things that we're trying to do. And, and then we are...
So, and...
And then we're just adding unit lot subdivisions as a separate action item, really breaking it out of what, where it was nestled in, hidden in action item. 4-7, 4-7, Action 4-7. amend Title 21 to expand provisions allowing small lot housing on lots smaller than 6,000 square feet, subject to compatibility standards. So the way the authors we read into it was the small lot housing was right in that one. But as it is going forward separately, we wanted to support it in the plan at the request of the commenter. It's also going forward now, and some of these, some other parts of 4-7 might take a year, two, or three years. So we broke it out. We recommended breaking it out.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that explanation. 11B, moving ahead for first of the final three here this evening.
11B actually shows up on your issue response map, 11C. If you look after Page 97, there's a map. And on that map, on the southeast, southwest corner of 15th Avenue and Lake Otis Parkway, there's a pair of parcels comprising six acres. The plan designates them as Main Street corridor. And those are the Merrill Field parcels in, in question. And the concern raised by Commissioner Spring was, was focused on traffic impacts of changing what is today a PLI zone parcel, a Merrill Field property that's used seasonally for snow storage and is otherwise not developed. I think a branch of North Fork at Chester Creek runs through it along and in a ditch along 15th Avenue. But otherwise, it's kind of a, open spa, not open space, it's undeveloped. And the concern has to do with the development of intensity there, problems with traffic. After we wrote the response, where we recommended moving forward with the, with this designation showing Main Street corridor like, like it shows on this map, we on Friday received an email response from the traffic engineer. She apologized for getting back to us late. She, she, in a nutshell, said in the email that it would be very difficult to improve 15th Avenue further, mostly because of the Merrill Field impacts on it from the north, and that, that because of traffic concerns in that area, she would recommend against increasing the intensity of use, which currently is a seasonal snow storage dump used by the municipality. The municipality, I think it's, it either does, or it's supposed to pay a nominal lease to Merrill Field for the property. FAA and Merrill Field would like to see higher return on that property. The property is designated to be non-aeronautical. It is not in a safety zone. It is not foreseen in the Merrill Field plan to be used for aeronautical use. Merrill Field likes it to be put to, quote unquote, higher use. They envision medical office, I think, is what they've told us. And, but in, in light of the comments from the traffic engineer, that southeast corner, all that could, there are different ways we could go on that. We could include it in the area-specific planning process, shown in Item 11C. Commissioner Spring suggested keeping it PLI. PLI would limit it to community institutional uses and facilities such as snow storage. Merrill Fields identified another par, property on its campus that they would recommend moving the snow storage to. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of this when I made the original comment, but I believe there's also an issue regarding the parcel land to the west of Sitka Street, which includes the current park and open space. I believe that the land use designation would change the use on that parcel also. It's currently PLI, and I believe the designation is, what was it called, Airport Facility or something? It wasn't very clear to me, but I did look at it, and it was, and I think that particular designation allows for I1 zoning.
Yes, the parcel further west, and you see it in the, just the edge of your map, is where the existing Sitka Street Park is. It's also a Class A wetland bog and goes all the way down to Chester Creek. And we all think of it as part of the Chester Creek Park corridor. No, no... No, uh, no, um... So this, uh, this piece of land west of Sitka Street, so it's west of this Main Street Corridor property, uh, the plan designates it as airport, railroad, or port facility with an overlay of the potential open-space alternative. So that potential open-space alternative language, that overlay, we worked out with Turnigan Community Council and Anchorage International Airport, applying to, you know, Little Campbell Lake and Kincaid, Coastal Trail north of, along the north coast, Connors Bog. This is in that same situation. It's an airport Merrill Field-owned property. The bulk of it, it's just in their safety zone. They have no intent to develop, uh, the bulk of that property. They did request, Merrill Field did request that we show the existing developed portion of Sitka Street Park, I don't know, about two and a half acres there on the corner of Sitka Street, as the Main Street Corridor as well. They would like to develop that as office as well. We determined to not designate it in that way. So the potential open-space alternative is the land use plan maps way of dealing with these airport park properties. It's sort of in the same situation as Little Campbell Lake and Kincaid, Connors Bog, Northern Coastal Trail, for that matter Ship Creek through the railroad properties. It's just in that same class where we're having to recognize this airport FAA issue underlying it, and we designate it potential open-space alternative.
Um, so why not just leave it PLI? Because technically, with the designation airport, port, or railroad facility, the zoning districts that would apply would be MI, I-1, I-2, and PLI. So, I mean, theoretically, you could come in there with an I-1 zoning, and, uh, it could be as intensive as what we were proposing for that snow dump.
Uh, community facility or institution includes public facilities, including electric power stations, water sewer treatment, public works, maintenance yards, water tank reservoirs. So it would also potentially include a, uh, a snow storage dump. Uh, so...
Was I mistaken? I think I misread them.
Uh, it's, uh, it's a bit broader than just, uh... It doesn't mention an airport. The airport land use designation is sort of designed to deal with these, uh, these open spaces as part of their campus. And of course, it includes this potential open-space alternative section now. And so we, to be consistent across the map, the way we treated these types of lands, we recommend that Sitka Street Park be shown in this way. It's just, uh, in the same boat as Connors Bog and those other open lands that are airport-owned. The same boat as Bernard Beach Park designated the same way. I keep saying Little Campbell Lake. I'll stop saying that one.
So through the chair, you're saying there's not going to be any change even though the land use designation has changed? I guess we could deal with it if a zone change came up. I'm a little confused, I guess. I don't understand what the implications of this land use designation is. I mean, it says here that primary uses, like you said, include transportation facility operation and activities. Light industrial and office warehouse activities may be accompanied on leased lots. That just doesn't seem appropriate for the site.
Uh, yes, that's true, and we wrote that with a thought towards the Raspberry Road area, Kulis. We were not thinking of Sitka Street Park when we wrote it. Perhaps we should, uh, clarify that. Perhaps we should clarify that. And the potential open-space alternative overlay is also intended to indicate the community intent where that land to be used for non-airport use. That would be our preference.
So we started out with 11B. Now we're really on a parcel outside of 11B. So where are we at this point? I mean, do you have a recommendation for that Sitka Street parcel? Can I just ask before I go there with John? In light of what you just said related to the traffic engineer's analysis, are you now indicating that your designation is going to be different on the parcels that are sort of the main focus of 11B?
We haven't had an opportunity to discuss with this, with the traffic engineer yet. And I'm really not sure which way to go with it. We...
I'm not even trying to understand the question.
We're fine keeping it like it's recommended and, uh, going forward with it, uh, and including it in this area, area-specific plan boundary, or, uh, we could have a discussion with the traffic engineer and bring it back if we determine, uh, there's no, there's no place for, uh, office or medical office on this property within the 2040 timeframe.
And that's because she feels that 15th is not enough of a road to support any additional development?
I can clarify that a little bit, because I... This has a fairly long history. The traffic engineer actually did look at some of the safety problems that were occurring at Sitka and DeBarre. And I was a member of the community council when that happened, so I happened to get, be there for the presentation. And the problem is when you're going... In fact, I know a friend of mine was in an accident, just this sort of accident, and trying to go westbound on DeBarre and turning left on Sitka. Traffic goes fairly quickly along there, 40 miles an hour, and of course, it's only two lanes, there's no left turn lane. So they aren't expecting somebody to be stopped in the through lane there, and what happens? And they're waiting to turn left, and it's often very difficult to get in and out of there. There's no traffic light and the traffic...
So why not not let them turn and turn left on Lake Otis and into the...
What's that? It's not Lake Otis, it's DeBarre and, or 15th and Sitka. So they looked at the options. They looked at different solutions, one of which was a left turn lane, and that was proposed. But it was rejected partly because of cost and due to the wetlands that were adjacent to there on the south side. And so it didn't go anywhere. And I think that's what the traffic engineer is probably referring to, the difficulty of finding a solution, an affordable solution to that traffic safety problem there, which would be exacerbated by a medical office complex there. It's going to increase the amount of traffic substantially.
So just someone please... What's our recommendation here this evening? Are you good with Sitka Street Park, the way that it's dealt with?
I'm not happy with that one. I think that needs to be changed, too.
To what?
Well, I would leave it as PLI.
Well, but PLI isn't a land use designation.
Yeah. Well, if there needs to be, it needs to be corrected because it's...
You're saying community facility or institution, leave it that?
Um, that has PLI passed, too, correct?
Uh, probably.
I'd be okay with that. I just can't see... It's obviously a mistake to designate a land use designation that allows industrial and warehouses there.
Okay, Ms. Wong.
I actually talked to Stephanie, and she said that looking at the Sitka parcel east of Sitka and south of 15th, that they did look at gaining additional right-of-way, but because of, one, wetland on the south, and then the garbage landfill situation north of 15th, to get either of additional right-of-way with those situations in play, that it would be challenging and very expensive. And so that's why she is saying that she doesn't recommend, um, more intensive development at this location. But again, we're talking about a 20-year horizon, and maybe there could be something 10, 15 years down the line that could come in, and they could fix the situation.
Uh, Mr. Spring, you got a recommendation on how we move here this evening? And if you want to say, you want to pull it because you want to come up, because you have a, or will have a recommended change, you're entitled to do that as well, but I want to just move us along this evening.
Yeah, I'd like to pull it so I give some thought as to what the designation should be, and maybe staff can help me with it, too. It sounds like they're willing to... They recognize the problem, and they can probably help find an appropriate designation.
So maybe note there that Mr. Spring would like to make a different land use designation. That doesn't mean the rest of us will agree with you, by the way. That's right.
Really?
So is he pulling 11B?
11B, but I think he's added Sitka Street to the west of Sitka as well as to the east of Sitka.
I think it would help to have, see what the alternative might be. I agree. You know, the commission might decide not to go that way, but let's find out what the options are here.
Okay. Moving on, 11C, geographic extent of the, uh, Texas called Northway Town Center. I think I mentioned this. My only issue is on the recommendations on Page 98. I'd love to know what a light, quick, inexpensive, small-area plan is, and could we get more of those? I love the idea of it. Can we do some level of planning that doesn't take, you know, two years and, you know, cost... I'm only half joking. Is there something there that is some different process that we would potentially be open to that would help us dive into some of these more challenging areas at a scale that's appropriate to those areas?
Mr. Chairman, uh, staff absolutely agrees with you. We did take another look at this and, uh, thought that maybe the small-area planning process might be a way to try and expedite things, but, you know, there's no magic bullet to any of this stuff, and, as you know, uh, so that was one of the suggested strategies that we thought might work, but it's not a, you know, a magical solution. So we're open to other good ideas as well. Tom, did you have anything else to add to that?
It may be as simple as, uh, we simply discussing this area further with the property owners, the residents, the three surrounding community councils, and just getting more information to provide a more informed recommendation about the future of this area and just bringing it forward as part of the, you know, the near-term amendment to the land use plan map. It could be just as simple as that. And it's just something that we haven't had the time to do, to further explore the needs of Alaska Regional and how this area might be, become a mixed-use medical, you know, northern expansion of the UMed. We just haven't had time to discuss it. We're getting mixed signals about the future of the Mobile Home Park. We haven't had an opportunity to talk to the actual owner of the Mobile Home Park property. We've talked to their managers, uh, and we've talked to the Northway Mall Management, CITC. And we haven't had a chance to circle back with the Mountain View Community Council. Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
And also, of course, the regional hospital folks need to be consulted, too, so. I, yeah, it'd be, yeah, I agree, it'd be interesting to see what a quick and dirty plan is. I think it's mostly information gathering, though, is what you're talking about, and maybe, you know, a couple-page report about what you've found out would be good, and any, maybe some recommendations if it seems necessary. I'm happy with it. That was my comment, I think, and that seems like a good compromise to me.
Well, I, again, it's not something that I can tell that we've done a lot of, and I do think it does have some value in sort of scoping out what these different tiered processes would look like. I mean, you know, I think there's lots of, you know, lots of things to learn from other communities on how they approach this stuff. Some small-area plans are really time-intensive. They dig into things on a huge level of detail. I'm hearing, you know, something that really just is talking about, you know, basically level of the land use plan map, and not much more than that, but just saying that you're not able to work the time out. So if there's some way to kind of distinguish what you really think the scope, you know, would be there, I just, I think it would be helpful. It would help your work plan eventually and make sure that you don't get too far into something that isn't really clearly the mobile... I'll tell you what's going to happen with the Mobile Home Park. At some point, it'll change. So it can operate, it might operate for 20 years, but at some point, all the infrastructure will start to fail, and you, and the units are older and older, and it will change. And so it's incumbent upon this plan to say long-term, what should it be?
Yes, we agree with that. We, uh, we have talked to the management of the Mobile Home Park, and they have said that Penland and I think two or three other parks, Manu Xyle, Southwood Manor, I think one other, that they manage, that they're investing in infrastructure now, and they believe they're good through the 2040 time horizon. We just wanted to be careful that we're not inducing change that could negatively impact the, uh, the more vulnerable among our community who live there. We're also keeping an eye on our, uh, our land capacity for housing, what those numbers are coming out to be. So we just want to be very careful about how we designate this and that we're not inducing a change that maybe wouldn't happen otherwise so soon without mitigating what could happen to the community there. Russian Jack Park and Airport Heights in consultation each expressed concern about their neighbors, uh, welfare, where the Penland Park to go away, and other Mobile Home Parks. It's a concern that we heard from multiple times, from multiple directions, so we want to be very careful.
I don't really see that as any different than any other housing or neighborhood type. I really don't. I, you know, change is coming. It's coming to stick-built as well as manufactured in a factory, and I don't, I think, I think the disservice is really not showing what it can or will be in the future. So we sort of, we sort of create a false sense of security when really it's going to be immediate market forces that at some point shut it all down. So I don't, I don't know. I'd rather be sure from a planning standpoint where we were headed with that in the long range than just to sort of pretend that if we don't change it, it's just going to keep operating the way it is for the long term. But that's my comment. I guess I'm fine with it as is unless Mr. Spring, you got another recommendation? 11G. 11G. I can't remember who pulled this.
I did, I believe. I did.
Okay.
Some, very similar issue to the previous one on 15th and Sitka, correct, Tom? It's, well, 24th and, and Lake Otis. And I don't know, it sounds like the municipal engineer also commented on this. Did they have, you have a report from her?
In this case, we just talked with traffic engineering staff informally and just got it to the point to where the, the amount of additional housing there would be likely to trigger a TIA where they to attempt a rezoning or development, you know, with 60 or more units. The TIA would, you know, if they were to find impact on Lake Otis, the TIA would, you know, require them to make off-site improvements or somehow mitigate the, the impact. And the Lake Otis is also called out in the MTP as a, a road reconstruction project. We are looking for housing opportunities. This is a vacant site. It's in between Midtown and UMed. It's on the Chester Creek Trail. It's within, well within a quarter mile of Northern Lights. Apparently transit's going to be running 15-minute headways in Northern Lights. It, it seems, it seems like an opportunity. In general, with a number of these issues, an underlying issue, there are two underlying issues. One has to do with traffic impact analyses and traffic impacts. There are sites and areas around this land use plan map that, that we call for growth and the current infrastructure can't handle it. The plan depends on future infrastructure improvements and, and more walking and, and more use of transit in order for Anchorage to grow. And, and in order for it to grow here or in anywhere. We, there, you, you can't handle growth if we just stick with today's infrastructure. So this is a forward-looking general plan. And, and we, we believe there are safeguards built into the processes that if there are traffic impacts, they'll be dealt with. Another underlying issue may be the impact of medium, higher density, no, medium-density housing on the neighborhood, just besides the traffic impacts. And we do intend to deal with those in, in upcoming issue responses in general. In general, adding more housing to a neighborhood, how's that impact the neighborhood? What are the safeguards for the neighborhood character? We heard that loud and clear as well. We don't deal with that here specifically, but we do intend to address that, that comment.
Well, there's one house. There's one neighbor there. Are there two? It's a sweet piece of property.
There will be perceived impacts on the neighborhood because there was a previous zoning or commission action on this property before. And I forgot if it was a rezone or a subdivision action. But the neighbors on the condo, the, in the condos above the site were really upset about this. And they came out in full force in the public hearing and commented all kinds. And I wish I had the time to look up that old case because I know there is issues regarding, they're concerned about water runoff, the density, like you say, the impact on their, their view of the green belt.
Oh, yeah, which, that's their right to be preserved for sure.
Well, they, I don't know what.
They bought their house next to vacant property. I don't think, I feel badly about their view.
I would say, these are things we're going to have to do.
No, we're not. Actually, I don't think we are at this level. I mean, I think what we're saying is, is this appropriate for R1? Are you going to go less dense between higher density and the green belt or more dense? And staff has said they want medium density. They're recommending medium density. I think it makes total sense, given that you have enough of a parcel to do enough of a concentrated development here.
I just mentioned that about the neighbors because it is going to come up. That's not my main issue. My main issue is the traffic. And I can tell you what's going to happen exactly because it already exists on 20th and Lake Otis. 20th Lake Otis is a, is a serious traffic accident site. And the traffic engineer, Bob Keneefel, actually went out and tried to resolve that problem, came up with some proposals. And the problem is the same thing that's going to happen on this 24th and, and Lake Otis. It's a two-lane road which narrows to one lane going northbound. And so you have through traffic on the inner, the inner lane, right? I guess it's the inner lane, towards the center line. And what happens is at 20th and Sitka is people stop there. There's a short left turn lane, a light, but people don't, it's so short that it ends up, a lot of times, you stop there waiting for traffic to clear coming this way, going southbound. And everybody's behind them, you know, kind of getting up tight and tense and maybe honking at them. And what happens is people end up making bad judgments and making turns and getting T-boned at that intersection. So here we've got another situation where we're going to increase the density and we've got people making a left turn going northbound on Lake Otis, holding up traffic. And people try to get around them and they'll swerve into the other lane. And hopefully, there won't be somebody coming really fast in that lane and waiting for it to clear. And another problem is that it's at the bottom of a hill where you have to stop. You're going, the speed on that is a lot faster than what the posted speed is because you're going downhill, first of all. And you don't even have to put your foot on the gas and you're going over the speed limit. So you're coming up to somebody who's waiting to make a left turn. Same thing on the Sitka Street on 15th. You aren't expecting them to do that. And you're, then you're trying to put on your brakes and the icy conditions on a downhill and you're going to run into them. You're going to cause all kinds of traffic accidents. So what is the TIA going to say? TIA says, well, it doesn't warrant the traffic light. Even if it did, they say, even if it did warrant a traffic light, you're still going to have problems with people trying to make left turns there and waiting, stopping through traffic. The, the project would solve the problem if, if, if Lake Otis was reconstructed. But what happens if the rezoning goes in before that? We say, well, okay, go ahead. We'll assume that the road's going to be constructed. Well, the road has, supposed to be reconstructed for the last 20 years. It's been on the plan for 20 years and it hasn't been implemented. And there's a serious money problem. It would cost over $30 million, $5 million to do it. And you're going to have to clear out almost all those houses along the east side of Lake Otis. So here you're putting the traffic engineer into this position where, okay, we're, we're fine. It's a good site for multifamily. You take care of the problem through your TIA somehow magically. Well, there is no magic way to take care of it through the TIA that I know of. There's no way to do it unless you reduce it to the density that already is allowed. So why even bother to increase the density?
So if you, I mean, the, you can pull this one. I'm just, I'm, I'm going to support staff's recommendation. I hear your concerns are legitimate concerns. But I think if we limited everything to our existing traffic and capacity, we wouldn't be adding a whole lot of any new residential anywhere in, in Anchorage. And then we might as well just skip this whole exercise because it's not worth it. But the point is, you can bring the, you can bring, you can, you can pull it. You can recommend to keep it, whatever it is, low, low density. I mean, it's R2M and R1. And that can be your recommendation. But it's, that's, that's how it's got to get presented. So you want to just, so, so, so it sounds like it's unresolved.
There are certain cases where you can foresee the problems. There's a lot of cases where you can't or where it is possible to resolve. And this case, I think, is unique. And there is no way to really resolve it. I was hoping the traffic engineer would give us more detail than they gave us, but.
So what's the cutoff then? You know, is it, so, so you can do 20 units today. So is it 30? Is it 40? Is it 50? Is it, she says 60. There's a lot between 20 and 60.
I think the cutoff is, don't make the problem any worse than it's going to be. Because it's going to be a problem even without the, the upzone, or upzoning. We have, we have to accept that.
We're, we're, we're not going to agree on how we're going to get there tonight. So, Tom, go ahead.
Yes. For areas like this where the problems of growth may be more severe with, with the impacts, you know, the, the land use plan map does depend on the MTP being implemented. And in other cases, other projects in the MTP being implemented. Other communities must have been through this issue where there are certain cases, certain sites, certain areas where maybe we should call out somehow that A needs to happen before B. Because once that project 118 and the MTP goes through, that could solve the problem. And, and, and then this area seems to meet all, most other, check the box for providing medium-density residential. Maybe there's something that staff can look at and research. In situations like this, I don't know if it's naming it specifically or somehow in the plan and appendix or something. I'd have to look at how other communities do it. But to, to keep the plan's integrity for a long-term vision, but also to take care of the public health safety and avoid a rezoning, you know, a cart before the horse type rezoning that, you know, where people get hurt. In other words, we could, we could propose to approve this. A, approve it pending, you know, staff coming back with some language to deal with this cart before the horse type problem. Or B, you know, put it on hold pending staff bringing that back or just approve it.
Yeah, I, well, I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, it'd be perfectly fine as, if the project was built. It would be no problem. You have a left turn lane, you get the traffic out of the way. And, and the project really needs to be done for a number of reasons. I think, in my opinion, that would be the way to do it. Because you can't, you can't order something like that, obviously, in a TIA. There's no way you can require a private developer to do that. And it would, it would improve the whole corridor.
How are you going to capture this one, Tom, then?
What, what we could do is staff bring back some language or a recommendation, an amendment to the draft plan to identify language to ensure that for this and sites with this severe problem of traffic impacts to, prior to implementing the density in the plan that, that the infrastructure is provided per the MTP or, or something to that effect to ensure that infrastructure is adequate for sites like this. I, I don't have good language right now.
Danielle?
I'm not really sure if I have a dog in this fight, but I think my one comment is thinking about what this would, if a developer is looking to develop this area, is it now that, oh, well, we can't develop this because the city hasn't gotten around to fixing this road and they haven't done it in 20 years. And we're now facing a financial constraint and maybe they won't fix it for another 20 years. I, that's my one concern about it. I'm not sure if I know a correct solution. I'm kind of fine with how it is. But, yeah, that's my one comment.
Thank you. Mitzi?
I know it occurs to me on this matter and on some of the others, I think it's really important for us to step back and take a, a longer-term general view. I mean, this, this is supposed to be aspirational rather than spot zoning. And I feel that staff has been aspirational here in identifying a potential for housing development on this site. It doesn't necessarily, you know, mean that it absolutely has to happen, but it paints the aspiration there, which we would hope would drive some of the other factors in the same direction. I think some of the things we're challenged with here is that we have so little control over some of those external factors. But at least we have the aspiration. We kind of have that with the Northway Town Center, although I have, you know, real concerns whether that will ever come to pass as a town center, whether it'll end up looking something more like a Villa Italia redevelopment to Belmar at some point in the future, which would be absolutely wonderful. But we, we don't have that crystal ball. So we have an aspiration here. We know that we need some more residential development. Here's one of many sites that's been, you know, identified as a potential place where maybe that can happen if things come into alignment.
I agree.
Thanks, Mitzi. Maybe, staff, you could, you know, sort of, on, on the recommendations, say the Planning Commission to recommend, one, whether to keep, keep the existing designation, two, whether to lower the intensity that's more reflective of the current zoning, or three, whether to condition in some way the recommendation to higher density to be done, to be timed appropriate to, to the level of service of the road or some, something to that effect. Because really, and then I think it's up to us to decide, are we comfortable with the recommendation acknowledging that things are not there today? And that really is the conversation that we have. Because I think if, because I think we've been comfortable doing that in other parts of the plan. It's full of them. So maybe that'll sort of trigger a more specific conversation when we get to that one and deliberate that one. So with, but with that, we got through issues, what, roughly 20-some-odd issues today. You, you all have alerted us that we have, I, I added 130, but it says 140 remaining issues. So, Mr. Cecil, I guess first, can I get a motion to come out of the committee of the whole? Thank you. Brandon, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any objection? We're, we're out of the committee of the whole. Mr. Cecil, you want to, or, or Mr. Davis, you want to tell us when we're, we're going to get, you think, all, all of the recommendations by February the 24th or, or just the next batch? What do you, what do you think here?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we intend to get all the remaining issues to you by February 24th. We believe that of those 130, 30 to 40 of those would merit deliberation in committee of the whole individually. And then the other 90 to 100 could be batched. Many of the 90 to 100 are, are minor changes to implementation actions, are minor area-specific issues. And just so the commission does is, is, is able to see where changes are occurring. But some of the 30 to 40 issues that merit discussion are some of the more in-depth issues that remain. You'll be receiving our findings on the land capacity analysis for housing or industrial with respect to how much land we, the land use plan map provides compared to how much our growth forecasts say it needs. We are also responding to multiple comments about how the plan's going to be implemented. In, in particular, is the action plan credible? Do we have the resources to implement it? And what, what's the flow of actions? We're going to provide that to you. We're also going to provide you a response to multiple comments about our target area rezonings. There appears to be support and almost a request by the community that there be more target area rezones and there be, whether through incentives or other means, just a more aggressive implementation of the plan where the plan is, is showing a change from today's zoning. So this, this is another big actions issue, target area rezonings and, and rezonings. There are others. And the, the comments come from all quarters, from the community councils, from the business community, from property owners, from agencies. Once you're completed with these 30 to 40 issues, we think merit deliberation individually and the additional 90 to 100. We believe that commission and the community will be handing a, a plan to the assembly that a, a plan to the assembly that, that really reflects really a strong community review. And, we think we can get these to you by February 24th. If we do that, that would provide the commission with several weeks before its March 13th meeting. I believe that'd be the first opportunity where you'd have significant time in a regularly scheduled meeting to look over these. So, you'd receive them February 24th, have a first chance at deliberation at March 13th. You know, I doubt you would get through all of them, so you would probably be looking at a subsequent meeting. I would just put out that maybe that subsequent meeting not be on that spring break week. Thank you.
Well, you just, isn't the 13th on, on spring break?
Yes.
And you're not going to be here spring break? We'll get through those pretty quickly. Mitzi? Do you, do you have a comment? You're in the queue. Is that from before? So, Mr. Davis, you're saying that we shouldn't take this up on the 13th, or we should take this up on the 13th?
I apologize, I clarify, if the commission wishes to push the schedule and, you know, add a meeting in March to, to finish it off, basically kill it off, that if it adds an additional meeting to the March 13th meeting, that such additional meeting, you know, would happen after spring break. That's, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
So, Lori handed me the, the cases for the 13th, and there are two rezones. It's like you guys have one. And then, another, a rezone from R0 to B3. So, two rezones, that could, who knows how long those take? So, we, we clearly wouldn't get through 130 issues at that point. Are you suggesting you not put it on that, that, that date at all?
On the 13th?
Yeah.
Well, it's selfish, I know, but I spend a lot of time on doing these issues, and I'd hate to miss the vote.
I don't think we're going to be ready, we're not going to deliberate.
This is not a vote.
It won't be a final deliberation.
If it's just issues, I'm...
What I said previously is, we're, we're not going to deliberate, meaning final action, if we're still going through issues for the first time that night. So, that, I mean, I, there's no way we're doing that. April, two meetings in April, is the second one, are we already accepting applications for the second meeting in April? I mean, is there a way to hold one of those for just this? Once upon a time, we used to keep the second meeting of the month kind of reserved for long-range planning. If, if, if we haven't reached cutoffs, if there's a way to reserve the April 10th meeting for this land use plan, then I think we'd like to do that. Ms. Wong?
The other option is that in March, both, UDC and ZIBA do not have cases, so their evenings in this room are, are available.
Oh, Brandon just got really excited to get an extra meeting going on.
Through the chair, Carol, UDC will have a meeting there. This week's meeting is going to be carried over till then, till March.
Okay, here's what we're going to do. This is, we're going to ask for a motion to postpone to the 13th of March. Then, what I'd like to do is ask staff to find us another meeting, or two likely, that we're, we're going to be able to, as Tom said, kill this thing off, I think. But, it's going to, I, I don't see, unless we get through all 130, getting through it. So, Ms. Bailey? Go ahead. So, you're moving?
We've to postpone till the 13th of March.
13th of March. Seconded by Mr. Walker. Are you good with that, staff, at this point?
Yes, I'd like to clarify, would, would the commission be open to a, a special meeting following spring break, an additional meeting?
I, I think the only, you know, there are five of us here tonight, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting. So, I think the only way to determine that is to poll people's availability on specific times. And if you can, you know, if you can get the numbers, then we ought to schedule it.
I'll also contact Terry and see if we can lock up April 10th for just solely the land use plan.
That'd be great. Hear that, Mr. Potter? No cases April 10th, not allowed.
Not allowed.
All right, that motion is to postpone. Any objection to the motion to postpone to March 13th? Hearing none, the land use plan map is postponed. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a comment? Real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to clarify, for purposes of the commission, I got an email from the school district asking to be on the capital improvement program, citizen advisory committee. I don't remember volunteering for that. So, that, why? Do you think that's appropriate for a commission person to be on there? Do you recommend it? Or, give me some guidance, because I, I'm not that, really that, I don't know.
Right, ask for that.
Yeah, you can give it to Strike.
Yeah, I thought he did. Yeah, that's right, I remember now.
He likes that stuff.
Okay, I'll, I'll recommend.
I mean, I think, I think, I don't know much about it. I, I think if you, you know, what, what they do, and all that kind of stuff, I mean, on a meeting-by-meeting basis, if someone wants to go a first time and say, no, we don't need to get, be there, then that's fine, too.
Well, they just finished their round this year. But I think, I've got a feeling it can be pretty intense.
Then I would say no, probably. If I were you, I'd say no.
I've got two other committees, so I'm, I don't need another one.
Yeah, we could just, we could nominate. You're going to, you're going to follow up as vice-chair with Mr. Strike, and see what his availability is. Okay. Any objection to adjourning? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.